You're not allowed, Ms. Chairman.
Recording in progress.
Joining us by Zoom, Stan Juvilakis and Chris Harrison. I think we're good to go. We're going to start off the meeting and we're going to have Councilman Joey Russo introduce his pastor to give indication.
I'd like to take tonight to the honor and privilege to introduce my pastor at Praise Cathedral in Greer, Pastor Jerry Madden, to do the indication.
Let's pray. Holy Father, on this first meeting of a new year, we begin by giving you thanks for all of your goodness to us, all of your mercy and grace that's demonstrated every day. We give you thanks for our county, for those who serve in our county, and those who lead our county. And we pray that the gracious hand of the Lord would rest upon them both tonight and this year to do good for everyone who lives here. At the end of this year, may this be a greater county because you have worked through love and unity, and may the hearts of men be bound together through the grace of Jesus Christ. And if these things are accomplished, we will make sure you receive all of the praise, for it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. She'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next item on the agenda are approval of minutes from the January 2nd meeting.
Move to approve.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda are proclamations and special recognition. We have two of those. The first one up is Chairman Curran recognizing the outstanding achievements of Dr. Yvonne Duckett.
And I'd like to invite Dr. Duckett to meet me down here at the podium, and I'll be right down there.
Mine and yourself. Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel and assembled citizens of Greenville County, it's my pleasure tonight to issue this proclamation on behalf of County Council to Dr. Duckett. She was the executive director of Greenville County Human Relations, and she recently received the 2024 MLK Leadership Award from Alpha Psi Alpha Fraternity, which is, you know, an important occasion. We just marked a holiday yesterday for Dr. King, and I first met Dr. Duckett many years ago, really. And one thing stuck in my mind is, in my district in Simpsonville, she and some of her folks were down there a few years ago, working with the local chambers, setting up how they could meet with local citizens to talk about homeownership and financial management, and developing those kind of skills that people need to be successful in life today. And so I knew at that time, Dr. Duckett doesn't just stay in the office. She and her team reaches out across the county and serves the people that we have in Greenville County. So we wanted to present you with this proclamation tonight. I'll read part of it. Whereas Dr. Duckett is originally from Orangeburg, South Carolina, and is a proud graduate of South Carolina State University, and earned a doctorate from Grand Canyon University, which she has used through her career in educating, counseling, staffing, and as leader of Greenville County Human Relations. And whereas Dr. Duckett, for more than a decade in Greenville County, has skillfully and passionately led human relations, fostering a dedication to service and care among her staff that created a nationally recognized department that promotes equal opportunity, fair housing choices, and financial empowerment for citizens. Whereas under her leadership, thousands of citizens have benefited from the Human Relations professionally-staffed workshops and one-on-one sessions that focuses on maintaining and securing homeownership in fiscally responsible ways, which many others have benefited, while many others have benefited, attending financial literacy classes and helping people navigate daily financial challenges while preparing for the future. Now therefore Greenville County Council honors the outstanding achievements of Greenville County Human Relations and acknowledges Dr. Yvonne Duckett for her outstanding leadership as she continues to guide her talented team on missions to improve our quality of life by providing equal opportunity for financial stability and success. And we celebrate Dr. Duckett's transformative contributions to our community and the national attention she brought to us via having, winning the Bloomberg Cities for Financial Empowerment Award, and her inspirational leadership that has created wonderful community partnerships that have positively impacted generations of citizens, signed this 16th day of January 2024 by Council Chairman Dan Tripp. So thank you, Dr. Duckett. Would you like to say a few words?
Wow. I feel like a special person. I feel like a special person. Last week, I received an award, as you just heard, the Martin Luther King Citizenship Award. And this year, I mean, tonight, I'm receiving the proclamation from Greenville County. Thank you very, very much Greenville County for giving me this prestigious award. However, you know that last year was a very cumbersome, very difficult year for me. But this award has come in such a fantastic time. Again, I thank you. And I'd like to take this time to thank my family and friends for joining me. Will my daughter and son please stand up? My staff, if I have staff here, commissioners, and friends. So thank you very much. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Thank you, Ms. Duckett, for everything you've done. Dr. Duckett, for everything you do for Greenville County. The next person I'd like to recognize for proclamations or special recognition is Mr. Russo. You've got a group here?
Yeah, I'd like to take the time to recognize our students from Blue Ridge High School. I'd like to take a minute and recognize them and thank them for coming out tonight. Thank you.
I'll quiz afterwards. All right, next item on the agenda are appearances for current agenda items. I believe we don't have anybody speaking on that, okay? Next item are public hearings, and we'll take the first one up. Magna Drive, Decostar, Chairman Curran.
Thank you, Chairman Tripp. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the amendment and bifurcation of a certain fee in lieu of tax, of ad valorem taxes, and incentive agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, Drive Automotive Industries of America Incorporated, Decostar Industries Incorporated, and MGSC001 LLC, together with any related entities and sponsor affiliates, originally entered into in 2013 and amended in 2015, execution and delivery of two amended, bifurcated, and restated fee in lieu of ad valorem tax and incentive agreements with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will continue to be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits, the amendment of certain fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes, and incentive agreements binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, Drive Automotive Industries of America Incorporated, and certain sponsor affiliates, originally entered into in 2002 and amended in 2004, and other matters related thereto. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curran, we have one speaking in opposition.
Okay, would that speaker come forward to the podium, please?
That would be Laura Allen.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address, force.
My name is Laura Allen, and I live at 38 Meadow Springs Lane in Greer.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'm here mostly because I just want to express my concern regarding the council's continued support of these type of agreements. I don't think that these agreements actually do much of anything to help existing residents. In fact, I think that these, the continuation of these agreements really only encourages further irresponsible development in this area. I don't feel that we are getting back what we're putting into these agreements, and I don't understand why the council continues to entertain them. Specifically in reference to this agreement, you look at the companies that you're giving these tax breaks to, and you've got Drive Automotive Industries, for example, which is a part of Magna International, whose CEO Swami Kotijiri lives in Canada and raked in $36.4 million in 2022, which in a working person's terms is $17,500 an hour, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year. And you compare that to the $7.25 an hour minimum wage in this state. Magna, as a company, reported third quarter 2023 sales of $10.7 billion, but the county felt compelled to give them a tax break. And so I'm a little confused on why the county continues to give tax breaks to giant corporations that don't need them and not the hard-working citizens that already live here in this county and the small business owners who actually are the backbone of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone signed up, anyone else signed up to speak, Ms. McCaskill? Thank you. I declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, Anderson Greenville Joint County Industrial Business Park, Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville County, so as to enlarge the park to include certain property, Southern Wall Products Incorporated, and HV Real Estate LLC. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curran, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Thank you. I declare this public hearing closed, Mr. Chairman.
Item C, Anderson Greenville Joint County Industrial Business Park, Chairman Curran.
This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, workforce housing of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curran, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
Thank you. I declare this public hearing closed, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, KPWT No Limit LLC, Chairman Curran.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source credit agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and KPWT No Limit LLC with respect to certain investment in qualifying infrastructure related to the construction of a predominantly residential mixed-use project in the county to include certain affordable and workforce housing in the county whereby such project will be subject to payments in lieu of taxes by virtue of its location in a joint county industrial and business park and to the application of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up for this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curran, no one has signed up for this public hearing.
I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item E, Upstate Trade Center Property Owner LP, Chairman Curran.
Yes, sir. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Upstate Trade Center Property Owner LP with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto. Ms. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curran, we have one signed up in opposition, Ms. Laura Allen.
Please come forward and, as before, give us your name and address.
My name is Laura Allen, and I live at 38 Meadow Springs Lane in Greer. Similar to my last comments, again, I want to express my concern with any of these agreements. Specifically with this one, the Upstate Trade Center was acquired last year by Dauphin Industrial. They are one of the largest privately-owned real estate firms in the entire country. They have property in over 20 states, from New York to California. They're based in Dallas, and their closest regional office to us is Atlanta. And yet, the county is convinced that they care about our community, that they will invest wisely in our community, and that the county needs them so badly for jobs that we're willing to give them, a company with no real connection to this community at all, a tax break. And again, I go back to what I said before about the fact that these are the last companies on earth that should be getting any sort of tax break from us. I would argue that any giant corporation at all should not be getting a tax break from us. If anything, it should be going to mom-and-pop small businesses that have been here, people that have worked here their entire lives, people that have raised families here, people that have given back to this community for years, as opposed to these giant corporations that want to come in and take and take and take and pretend that they're going to do any good for this community when they don't. Specific to this industry, though, I think with these industrial, bringing in industrial business, I just don't think is, should be of any interest to us at this moment. I think if anything, the county needs to invest in industries that actually are in need right now. For example, with our continued growth, I'm sure you all are aware, if you go to the doctor at any point, that our healthcare system is in shambles because of, number one, the increase in population, but specifically the increase in the 65-plus population over the past few years. I read an article that said that the number one reason that people gave for coming to Greenville County, I think it was last year, was retirement. So with an increase of retirees, we have that extra tax on our healthcare system, and it's not able to support it right now. I don't know about y'all, but it takes me three months to get into a lot of doctors that I want to see. And so if any tax breaks are given to these big corporations, I don't understand why it wouldn't be more of those industries that I think we actually really need to see right now. But I would argue that, like I said, we don't need tax breaks for any of these large businesses. If anything, support the small business owners that actually are the backbone of the community. Furthermore, I've seen firsthand, coming from a blue-collar family, exactly what these manual labor jobs really have to offer to the community, which is not much. My mom spent over 20 years of her career doing backbreaking labor for GE, who I'm sure you all know received millions from this county over the years. And what she got from that was chronic pain in her entire body, three hip replacements, and the inability to lift her arms over her head. So I've seen firsthand just exactly what these companies and jobs are bringing to the community and where are her tax breaks. So.
Much. McCaskill, is anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
No, sir. That was the only speaker.
This public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda are ordinances at third reading. We've got some zoning ordinances to go over on third reading. I'll call on Councilor Phant for the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CZ 2023-073, property located at 440 Terry Road, Fountain Inn, requesting rezoning from unzoned to RR3. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm getting an indication from the folks on Zoom, the council members, that they're not participating, or they can't hear, or... So I don't know who...
Okay, what's the issue?
Well, my understanding is they can't get on Zoom, or they can't hear, or is it on now, or...
Chris is on, and Stan has been on, but it looks like he just got off.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I saw the timer.
All right, next item on the agenda, CZ 2023-74, Chairman Phant.
Property located on Lakewood Drive, Malden Road, and West Butler Road, Greenville, requesting rezoning from RS to S1. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a motion on this one.
Okay, state your motion.
On the request of the applicant, I make a motion that we hold this item until February 20th.
All those in favor of holding this item until February 20th, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next one, next item, 75, Chairman Phant.
Property located at 460 Griffin Road and Griffin Road, Greenville, requesting rezoning from RS to R20. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item 79.
Six.
I'm sorry, 76.
Property located at 12 Impact Drive, Greenville, requesting rezoning from C2 to FRD, with the condition, which we did the condition at second reading, therefore now I move for adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 79.
Property located on West Parker Road, Greenville, requesting rezoning from R10 to OD. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 81.
Property located at 1220 West Parker Road and Clark Drive, Greenville, requesting rezoning from R10 to RMA. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All those in favor of adoption of CZ 2023-81 on third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 83.
Property located at 419 Old Balling Springs Road and Bruna Vista Way, Greer, requesting rezoning from RS and FRD with conditions, conditions were adopted at second reading. I move for adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 84.
Property located at 318 Old Balling Springs Road, Greer, requesting rezoning from RS to FRD with conditions, conditions adopted at second reading. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 84.
69.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, 69.
Property located at 926 and 926 A Fairview Road and 1642 Neely Fair Road, Simpsonville, requesting rezoning from RS and, from S1 and RS to C3. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We have a couple text amendments. First one, Chairman Phant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend the Greenville County zoning ordinance so as to amend Article 8, Section 8, Subsection 8, 11.3, official MSDD boundary.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of this text amendment at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item C, Chairman Phant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend the Greenville County zoning ordinance so as to amend Article 12, Table 12, One Community Recreation Area.
All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is a sewer easement agreement. Chairman Curran.
Mr. Chairman, from the Finance Committee, I believe we have about the next eight items on the agenda tonight. So the Vice Chairman of Counsel and also Vice Chairman of Finance, and I discussed it, and we think we'll swap off and do every other one. I'll start with this one here on 8D, I believe it is, Sewer Easement. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to authorize the execution and delivery of a sewer easement over a portion of the interrey residential waste and recycling center property located at 1311 Anderson Ridge Road, Greer, and other matters related thereto.
You've heard the motion on third reading. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Chairman Seaman for Magna Drive, Decostar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at the third reading and ordinance authorizing the amendment and bifurcation of that certain fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, Drive Automotive Industries of America Incorporated, Decostar Industries Incorporated, and MGSC001 LLC, together with any related entities and sponsor affiliates, originally entered into the 2013 and amended in 2015, execution and delivery of two amended, bifurcated, and restated fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreements with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will continue to be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits, the amendment of that certain fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, Drive Automotive Industries of America Incorporated, and certain sponsor affiliates, originally entered into in 2002 and has amended in 2004, and other matters related thereto.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at third reading.
Mr. Chairman, will I make a comment on that?
Sure.
As discussed and reviewed in the Finance Committee, this is not renewing any kind of incentives for this company. It's a sort of a legal cleanup for some of the entities that were involved in the ownership of the company. And so it's something necessary that council has to recognize, those entities, but it's nothing new for financial reasons.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Chairman Curran, I'll give you a F.
Yes, sir. Anderson Greenville Joint County Industrial Business Park, 2010 park, Agreement Amendment, Southern Wall Products Incorporated, and HV Real Estate LLC, formerly Project White, I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park to include certain property of Southern Wall Products Incorporated and HV Real Estate LLC. This is located in Anderson County, and under state law, Greenville Counties has to be a 1% partner in it. So I make the motion we approve this.
All those in favor of adoption at third reading.
Information.
Sure.
Is that to receive money from, do we...
Yes, we receive 1% of what, just for participating under state law.
Thank you.
All those in favor of adoption at third reading, please say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item is G.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend the agreement for the development of Joint County Industrial and Business Park, 2010 park of Anderson, Greenville Counties as to enlarge the park to add certain property in Anderson County, Project Austin. And I have an additional motion.
State your motion.
I move to hold this item until the public hearing is scheduled.
All right. All those in favor of holding this item until we have a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item H, Chairman Curran.
Thanks, sir. Let's see, item H. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, workforce housing of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call on third reading.
Mr. Chairman, I have nine or eight in favor, one opposed, one abstention, and one absent, or two absent, sorry.
Okay. The motion is adopted at third reading, or the ordinance is adopted at third reading. Next item is item I, KPWT No Limit LLC. Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source credit agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and KPWT No Limit LLC with respect to certain investment in qualifying infrastructure related to the construction of a predominantly residential mixed-use project in the county to include certain affordable and workforce housing in the county whereby such project will be subject to payments in lieu of tax by virtue of its location in Joint County Industrial and Business Park and to the application of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at third reading.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call is requested.
Question for our council members who are on Zoom. Are they able to roll call, or what's the protocol for their roll call?
Mr. Chairman, in the last vote, Mr. Juvilakis...
I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement between, binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Upstate Trade Center Property LP with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay. Item K, Drive Automotive Industries of America, Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at the third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a project identified as Project Eagle with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto. And I have an additional motion.
State your motion.
I move to hold this item until the public hearing is scheduled.
All right. All those in favor of holding this item until we have a public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item H, Chairman Kirven.
Thanks, sir. Let's see, item H. I move for adoption at third reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, workforce housing of Anderson and Greenville County, so as to enlarge the park.
Okay. All those in favor of adoption at third reading...
Roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call is requested?
A question for our council members who are on Zoom. Are they able to roll call, or what's the protocol for their roll call?
Mr. Chairman, in the last vote, Mr. Givellakis did text me his vote, and I have it recorded. I did not get anything from Mr. Harrison.
Okay.
Thank you.
Which item are we voting on, Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
8A.
Yes. 8A.
Mr. Chairman, we have nine in favor, two in opposition, and one absent.
Okay. The ordinance is adopted at third reading. Next item is item J, Upstate Trade Center Property Owner LP. Chairman Kirven.
I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement between, binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Upstate Trade Center Property LP with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay. Item K, Drive Automotive Industries of America, Chairman Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for adoption at the third reading and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Upstate Trade Center Property LP with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto.
All right. All, any questions on the motion for adoption at second reading? All those in favor of adopting ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Now we'll go to ordinances at first reading, and Chairman Fan, you've got quite a few zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Mr.[1563.11]